Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for this 106th regular session. I'll call it to order. I'm going to give the invocation and then we'll have the pledge of the flag. If you would please stand and join us. Dear Lord, your word reveals to us that in your kingdom, there is an immeasurable amount of people from every nation, from all tribes and people, and from all languages. This diverse multitude are all worshippers of you, who stand before the throne and before the lamb clothed in white robes, crying out that salvation belongs to you. In heaven, there is diversity and inclusion. So let this be our mindset here on earth too. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Some quick announcements, we'll be following the rules procedure that were effective January 21st of 2020. We're back to that. If you have a cellphone, please put it on mute. All correspondence or distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk. It should include, it should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. The next scheduled meeting dates are Tuesday, August 4th, Tuesday, the 11th, and Tuesday, the 18th are all work sessions at 4:00 PM. And Tuesday, the 25th is a regular session at 7:00 PM. All right. Next up on the agenda are appointments to the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council Partner Group.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the appointments for the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council Partner Group. All terms to expire on July 30th, 2021. Peter Bigford, Carrie Fair, Eric Rollins, Shayna Ruff, and Anthony Williams.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council, Council Youth Members.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the following appointments with all terms to expire August 31st, 2022. Kevin Boeckum, Blessing Moses, Haley Olivero, Eden, Tia Dorvici, Summer Seaword, Tina Akongdeng Azizi, and Jeremy Calcarean.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have some guests with us this evening. And we are going to be doing the Historic, Historic District Commission Preservation Awards.
Good evening. I'm Pop Miller for the Planning Code Administration Department and Historic District Commission. I come bearing greetings to the HTC. Typically annually, we do reservation awards where we recognize various projects that have gone on in the previous 24 months or so. Last year, things were a little bit thin. There was a lot of projects in progress, while a lot of those projects are now complete. So this year, we have a bumper crop of awardees, total of eight this year, and we'll go through them one at a time. First one on the list this year is for the Pioneer Hook and Ladder Company. This is a property that is owned by the city. It was built in 1915 on the site of the original city well, or the city spring. The city divested of it and sold it to MSB Architects that turned around and put a significant amount of work and effort and resources into it to turn it into upscale offices for their architectural firm. As you go inside, they actually pulled out some of the upper level flooring area, so you have a sweeping staircase and very high ceilings in some parts. And tonight, we have representing MSB Architects, Scott and Ken. Also, I'd like to introduce everybody to Chris George. Chris is a new member of the Historic District Commission. He's here representing Mike Gere, the chairman, who could not make it this evening.
Well, a huge thank you to MSB Architects. Wonderful work on the Pioneer Hook and Ladder building. We appreciate it very much. Well, it's great to have you. You want to say?
No.
Let me offer you that. Eric, you want to get a pic? Maybe you've had a picture of them holding it up.
You want another one? Want to see him with that crown? There you are.
And I'll like to point out that the, that the doors, the configuration of the doors was based on photographs of early, early photographs of the building, showing much more glass on the front than the doors that have been there for the last 20 or 30 years. Next is the Mount Etna Cannon Display. The cannon is representing the Department of Parks and Engineering. It's the city engineer Rodney Tissue. To give you a little bit of background, the cannon is actually owned by the Washington County Historical Society, and it's been sitting on some lumber, basically, behind the Hager House for a number of years. It was actually borrowed by a museum down in Williamsburg. In return for the loan, they did significant conservation work on it. It was returned, it was one temporary display down there in Williamsburg. It was returned, and the Department of Parks and Engineering erected a pedestal to install it in a more visible location, and also did an interpretive panel, as you can see in the photograph as well.
Rodney's here representing Mr. Bartle.
Oh, Rodney's here.
Third on the list is the Schmackrel Stube Bavarian Restaurant and Dieter Bloosel. This is a situation where it was actually new construction, and new construction is important in historic districts. You need to maintain your vitality, replace in some cases buildings that just aren't serviceable anymore or not historic. But the idea is for new construction to blend in with the character of the existing historic area. And in the particular, this particular case with the Schmackrel Stube, the, they and their architect, MSB Architects, by the way, did an excellent job of coming up with a design that fits in with the streetscape of our downtown area. So we have certificates for Dieter and for MSB Architects.
May I take my mask off?
You might as well. I'm going to pull the screen back.
My, my language is hard to understand without a mask on. I would like to thank everybody for this recognition. I would like to say thank you to everybody for this recognition and, thank you everybody for this recognition. It was a little bit an extra effort to put in for everything, but I feel like it was worthwhile, and it does blend in very nicely, even if it was not the original idea what we had, but it is blends in very well with everything else, so it was a success in my opinion. Thank you.
Picture. While that's happening, I just want to thank you very much for your investment in downtown Dieter. So it's a, it's a beautiful building, and many years of happiness for you and good luck.
Okay. Next up is another one similar to the Firehouse. This is the Massey Ford Kart Dealership Building on East Baltimore Street. This is another building that was under the city's ownership for a number of years. The city sold it to Mr. Lloyd Thoburn, who turned around and rehabilitated it and put it back into use for retail purposes. He did a new parking lot next to it, landscaping along the front, cosmetic improvements, paint scheme tied to the architecture, the architeco nature of the building. But also, and very importantly, this is an excellent example of the importance of windows to vitality of a downtown area. He replaced all of the former display windows that used to be there. So we have Mr. Thoburn.
That's a magnificent remake of that, of that building. I worked in that building when I was 15, washing cars when it was in a mass.
Did you ever work in the basement?
I went in the basement. Didn't work in, I was a car washer and a lot mover.
There was a little, what I found in the basement written on one of the columns, it said "Work to the left," and it said "Man falls to the right." And I shouldn't say this is a public session. Little airplane upstairs, it said asshole.
No, no, that wasn't me. Believe it or not, and I know probably everything is the contrary today. That wasn't me.
Whoever had to work in the basement did.
Well, that's what you want to say?
No, that was it. Thank you, sir. We don't want a picture with you.
Sure I do. I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, old sir.
Thank you.
Next up is property at 17 East Avenue. This is a residential property in the downtown zoning district. It's half of a duplex. Mr. Bartle purchased it, put a significant amount of money into renovations, and a stair elevate, stair addition to the rear in order to reuse what was a residential building for offices and office suites.
Who wants to take this? Well, thank you very much. I used to deliver newspapers there when I was a kid.
Okay.
Yeah, I was young, and so, anyway, you want to say?
It has changed. No, no, thank you. We are, we are glad to be part of City Center, and our small contribution will make a difference.
We're happy to have you, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, you want to get a picture? Can I get in with you guys? I don't have my mask.
Certainly. This way.
Our next is the Southern Shoe Factory Building, owned by Action Holdings. This is a former, early 20th century factory building that was purchased and repurposed and renovated for a variety of uses. It's in the downtown mixed-use zoning district, so there's a variety of uses in there, including offices, stores, private school, a number of things that are located in there. This is an interesting example because historic preservation isn't always necessarily trying to absolutely restore something. This is more characterized as a renovation, but sometimes renovations themselves also help preserve and protect the base resource of the particular building and keeping it from, from being lost to demolition. Aaron Penarance represents the owner. Unfortunately, we got a message from him at the very last minute that due to a conflict with something with his children, he was not able to be here tonight, so we do not have somebody to accept it for this evening.
Thank you, Aaron, if you're watching.
Okay. And then the next is the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Classroom Edition. This is a situation, again, like the Schmackrel Stube, where we had a number of projects that were excellent new construction infill designs within our downtown area this year. And for this award, we have the Washington County Board of Education and the Bowman Development Company. And representing them tonight is Jeff Tetrick. And also the architect, Pushy Fightmore, and we have a certificate for that as well.
Jeff, you want to say a few words? If you don't want.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On behalf of Bowman Development, Don Bowman, and all of the Bowman family organizations, I'd like to thank you for recognizing this project. Working downtown is always as challenging as it is exciting. I'd like to extend, extend special thanks to Rodney and all of the City of Hagerstown staff, which helped us make this project happen. Also like to thank our neighbors who tolerated the construction next door as we were both rapidly trying to build. I'd like to leave you with the thought that Bowman has even more exciting projects coming downtown. Thank you.
Are you involved in the renovation of Masonic Temple?
Yes.
I can't wait to see that. Yeah, I can't wait to see it. Well, thank you very much, and, you know, as always, we appreciate Don's investment in the downtowns.
Thank you.
Eric, you want a picture? Can I get in with you?
Yes.
You don't have to put that on for that. We're going to get back to normal one these days.
And I'm sure Bowman will be back here next year or the year after, once they finish that project too at the Masonic Lodge as well, because that's moving along excellently as well. And then the last one that we have this evening is...
Last but not least.
The Maryland Theater Edition. This again is an excellent example of excellent design that fits in with, even though it's new construction, fits in with the character and is very cat compatible with the historic areas surrounding it. It's definitely different than the theater two doors down or next door, but nonetheless, even though they're different, they're compatible. They all seem to fit in well together with one another. And this evening, representing the Maryland Theater, we have their executive director, Jessica Green, and their president, Benito Vidalana.
I'm not just sure that there's a name difference on there.
Well, I guess it knows. Oh, that's okay. We're okay. We're, yes. We always humbled to be representing the Maryland, the historic Maryland Theater, and can't thank the City of Hagerstown and the Permits Department, Kathy, Paul, Pam, all of them, Steve and Historic Commission for helping us and guiding us through this amazing process. The rest of the downtown, the restaurants across the street and next to us, the school, the fire department next door, just an amazing experience, really, and we're so glad to be at the end of it. And, and we hope to be opening our doors again soon enough and welcoming all of you back into the Historic Maryland Theater Performing Arts Center. So, thank you.
I was just going to add, amazing community support. And without the community of Washington County coming together, this would have never happened. Not only with the project, but prior to the project, keeping the theater alive and hoping there would be a time when it would be restored. And we're very thankful that we have an amazing community that has been part of this project all along. Thank you. And Mayor and leadership, really appreciate it, the city, county level, and the state for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I know that Lou's old enough to remember what the Maryland Theater looked like on the movies there as a kid. And I don't know if anybody else up there. I mean, I know you're old enough, Austin. I didn't think you were here.
Andrew, you used the Maryland Colonial.
Yep, yep.
Been in the front room watching Old Yellow. That's, that's all we have. Like, thank you all very much. I'd also like to point out that with the Maryland Theater, we also had a certificate for their architect, Sue Haynes, with Grimmon Parker, so that was part of, part of the team as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. As pointed out last week, you could still email your comments in prior to 5:00 PM. Donna, did you get any?
No.
Okay. We do have some people signed up to speak. Keep in mind, this is, this is comment section. This has nothing to do with the public hearing that's coming up. This is a comment section. So I'll call your name. We off, we, we ask that you keep it from three to five minutes tops. So first up is Wanda King.
I'm going to speak for our group, Mayor Pritchard. So my name is Sean Plaisance. My address is 11682 Rocky Meadow Road, Clear Spring, Maryland, 21722. And I am here today just to comment on the proclamation that the town council had made to the City of Hagerstown. I just want to point out to the council that the proclamation that they made against hatred, brutality, and violence, once again leaves out the most persecuted segment of our population, that would be the unborn. The council failed to take the high ground to note that, you know, more children are killed at the hands of women in the womb than any other segment of our population. I'm sure that everyone knows, and it's just common knowledge, that, you know, at least the statistics of 2017, that nearly 30,000 abortions occurred in Maryland at that time. At the same time, only 10,700 people, can't say only, died of cancer. 11,500 people died of heart disease. And it's a little bit frustrating to find the statistics from the ACLU on police killings or whatever, but the only thing I could find was that between 2010 and 2014, that they stated that 109 cases, whatever, were identified in the state of Maryland. I just want to say that, you know, until we as a country, as a people, recognize that life begins at conception, 97% of our textbooks that we teach and are in our educational system say that life begins in the womb, at conception. Also, we know that it is impossible for a person to have a dog or a cat or, as a baby. So we, until we embrace that and we stop saying that life matters, you know, when I deem and put my criteria to it, we will never have peace among our town, or our state, or our country. I assure the frameworkers of our constitution, when they said, "We find these truths to be self-evident, that all men were created equal," there was a time when women said, "Hey, hey, hey, you know, men and women, also for our minorities, right?" Black said, "Hey, no, we are also included in all men." I say now that what we're doing is we're missing a huge segment of our population that is experiencing persecution. And it will one day be determined to be genocide. I ask the town council to please consider and think about what we want for our town, that this town can be a great town, but what we need to do is we need to stand up for all life in all circumstances. I just pray that God should put his wisdom and knowledge into all of you, that we show all of us, including myself, embrace our, and love our neighbor as ourself, right? The Bible states it all, "Love your neighbor as yourself, love your enemy, pray for those who persecute you." You know, it has all the laws that we need, it has all the thoughts that we care to think. God has shown us how to behave and act. I just pray that please consider that the reproductive services in Hagerstown or whatever is not consistent with your proclamation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Paul Rose.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul D. Rose Jr. of the Frederick Office of Miles and Stockbridge at 30 West Patrick Street in Frederick, Maryland. I represent the owners of the 17270, 17276, and 17280 Valley Mall Road properties, the locations of the Valley Mall Diner, the courtyard by Marriott, and Spring Hill Suites by Marriott. I'm here to speak regarding the resolution that's up for a vote for approval tonight with respect to the annexation of my client's properties. My clients respectfully request that the Mayor and Council table the annexation resolution as it's currently drafted. I submitted a letter to the record yesterday, and I was able to speak with your planning staff in advance of tonight's meeting. I hope you've had an opportunity to consider the points raised in my letter and perhaps speak with your staff regarding the arguments therein. I also hope that my correspondence to date has been clear, that my clients do not oppose the city's annexation of their properties. My clients understand that they signed a pre-annexation agreement. What my clients are requesting is temporary relief from the dramatic increase in real estate taxes that will come along with the proposed annexation. The resolution, as it's currently drafted, contemplates a three-year phase-in approach with no increase in real estate taxes in year one, 50% in year two, and 100% in year three. My clients heard your comments at your public workshop on July 14. It seemed that you were in agreement that you should follow some uniform phase-in or ramp-up approach for every such request from a property owner whose property is being annexed by the city. However, these are not ordinary times. My clients request that you consider an approach whereby you would apply the three-year phase-in, that zero, 50%, 100% approach, for every request after 2021. For all requests prior to the end of 2021, we submit that a five-year phase-in would be more appropriate in consideration of the devastating impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on local businesses. To be clear, my clients have amended their request and are requesting a five-year ramp-up, the number that was suggested by Councilman Alshire at the workshop, whereby real estate taxes would not be increased in year one, 25% in year two, a 50% increase in year three, 75% in year four, and 100% in year five. But even with that five-year approach, it would be a struggle for my clients to pull out of the situation they find themselves in, but it provides my clients with a much better chance of success. As I've explained in my two letters to you, this virus has absolutely shredded my client's business, that is, the hotel and the diners. The hotels are operating at historically low occupancy rates. In short, people are not traveling, and they are not staying in hotels. One of the hotels and the diner were closed for three months, and the diner is now operating per state law at 50% occupancy. My clients have offered very significant concessions to the diner, its tenant, but it's anything but clear as to whether the diner will be able to recover. The proposed three-year ramp, which is included in the resolution tonight, will push my clients to the brink of defaulting on their loan covenants. Speaking of the possibility of default, there was some discussion about my client's plight at the public workshop on July 14th, and it was stated that, words to the effect that if my clients fail, it wouldn't impact the city because another entity would purchase the hotels. Respectfully, that kind of thinking is shortsighted. If my client's businesses fail, it's a lose-lose scenario, because as the value of the properties is reduced, the assessment is also lowered, meaning less tax revenue for the city. Not to mention the fact that if my client's businesses fail, scores of city residents will lose their jobs. This pandemic was impossible to plan for. My clients are fighting tooth and nail to keep their businesses afloat. I humbly and respectfully implore you to consider the tremendous investment that my clients have made in this region. clients have made in this region over decades. Consider the incredibly high tax burden in terms of real estate taxes and hotel tax that my clients are already paying, and the dramatic increase in real estate taxes that this annexation brings. Consider the timing of this annexation in light of an unprecedented global pandemic that has shredded the restaurant and hospitality business. And please consider that it is in everyone's best interest for the hotels and the diner to succeed. It's certainly in my client's best interest, but also the, the hotel and diner's employees' interest and the city's interest. My clients request that you vote to table the vote on the resolution that's before you tonight, so that your staff can prepare an amended draft that would provide for a five-year ramp-up, 0% in year one, 25 in year two, 50 in year three, 75 in year four, and 100 in year five. My clients and I thank you for your consideration of this very important request.
Paul, your time's up, but I, I do have a question. I was at that meeting, I'm pretty sure. I don't recall anyone saying that if, you know, if the hotels go out of business, somebody else will buy them. Do you know who said that?
It was Councilman Metzner mentioned that at the meeting. I mean, I don't have the transcript in front of me, but it, and I'm not, it's not a direct quote, but it certainly was words to that effect. And, you know, as I said, you know, my, my, my clients are working very hard to push through this situation. The, the future is, is uncertain. The, as I've said in my letter, in the city of Baltimore, restaurants are now closed again. And so we just don't know what this is going to bring, and it's going to take some time, I think, even when, if we get a vaccine, if we get some therapeutics for people to have the courage to go out and travel and to stay in hotels again. So this is not something that these businesses are going to recover from overnight. And, and I think, you know, the message I wanted to give is that we have heard you, that, I don't know if there was a miscommunication or what happened, but my client never would have requested, meant to request certainly, that not to pay any increase in real estate taxes over a period of 10 years. The suggestion was three years with a gradual increase over the following seven years, but we have heard you in your comments in the meeting, your public workshop, and it is my hope that a compromise, that in the nature of what I've suggested, could be agreed to.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Usri?
Good evening from all of you. Actually, I'm the tenant for Valley Mall Diner.
Could you, could you take your mask down to speak, please? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm the tenant for Valley Mall Diner, and we get hit badly from March to May, shut down completely, zero income. Then we start gradually open for delivery and pickup, which is, doesn't cover even the electricity. Then we start to, from June, to open 50%. But with 50%, we don't have guests even covered 25%. Most of the time, we have no tables filled in. I know the owner is hurt badly, and he pushing us to pay the rent and help him with the taxes, but unfortunately, we can't. We pay the rent, we offered him to pay 25% or at the maximum 50% as we open. And that's will hurt us as well, because we are going to pay from our own pocket, not from the income. So we feel sorry for him and sorry for us, so we need actually great help from the Washington City. Otherwise, we have to shut down and send the people out and close the business. We have no other choices, because with every morning we open our restaurant, we pay from our own pocket. We don't have, at the end of the day, any coverage for what we spend. In addition to that, maybe you noticed as citizens, how much the supplies raised their prices. The meat went up, the vegetables went up, fruits went up, milk went up, all the prices going higher. So we don't know how we survive with that. Unfortunately, we, we keep struggling, but we hold tight until this pandemic go away. We have, hoping God, by the end of this year, maybe we get a vaccine or something, so the people can come and enjoy their time. In addition to that, the people can come, the people also lost their wages, lost their employment, so they didn't have enough money to come and spend money on a restaurant. So please help us recover. We support the owner request, and we hope that you respond to that. Thank you, guys.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Do you know when your first tax payment will be made, will, will become due?
I think in next year.
Yeah, after next July, first, yeah. Okay.
If we, if we, if we get covered or we survive it and we have enough income, we never mind to help, but at, at this time, we lose every day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the individuals that have signed up. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak that did not sign up? Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Public hearing, ma'am.
No, next thing on the agenda is a public hearing. I told you. The annexation of the Thomas Bennett Hunter and Other Lands. Megan, I wasn't trying to ditch you there, just.
So this is the public hearing for a different annexation. This one is case number A 202005. It's the annexation of Thomas Bennett Hunter and Other Lands. So the property to be annexed is the shaded polygon shown in the map here. It's shown in relation to the corporate boundary. The subject property is front Hopewell Road, Ants Halfway Boulevard, and as you can see, they're contiguous with the city's corporate boundary. The properties are also within the city's growth area, and they're approved for city water. The proposed properties include 11661 Hopewell Road, which is owned by Thomas Bennett Hunter, also a portion of Halfway Boulevard Right-of-Way and CSX Right-of-Way. And the Thomas Bennett Hunter property is actually subject to a pre-annexation agreement, case number WS 201507. And they also have an approved site plan, and I do believe that construction has begun at the site, and they do have approved water as well. As for the acreage and zoning details, the total acreage to be annexed is 21.15 acres. The current county zoning is partially HI, which is Highway Interchange, and then also partially industrial general. The larger parcel there is IG. And then the proposed city zoning is also industrial general. So the county zoning is generally consistent with the city zoning. Again, they're both industrial zones, and you can see the zoning exhibit shown here as well. And then here's another map image, just for reference. It is the vacant tract that you see there to the left of the Highway Interchange. And then as for the annexation process, we did send the resolution and the adopted annexation plan to the state and the county for a 30-day review and comment. I just provided mayor and council with MDP's letter, but essentially, they agree that the zoning is generally consistent, and we have not yet heard back from the county. And then I'd also like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for A 202005. And then for the schedule, again, the resolution and the plan, or the resolution was introduced on May 26, and the plan was also adopted on May 26 as well. Today's the public hearing, July 28, and then the resolution will be up for approval on August 25. And then if it's adopted at the regular meeting, it would become effective 45 days later in So we do have a public input period tonight, but the record also will be open for 10 days. You can call, mail or email public input for this annexation, and then all my contact info is on the screen here as well.
Anybody have any questions for me, from the council?
I just have a quick one. The, the statement in the, in the letter there from the Department of Planning in Maryland State, suggesting the city confirm with the county that a waiver on the proposed zoning, that no waiver is needed, is that, do we still need to do that, or it's pretty well a moot point?
Because the zoning's pretty consistent, we probably don't need the express approval. And like I said, they have an approved site plan with approved water already. That was consistent with the county's IG zoning and is also a use that would be allowed in our IG zoning as well. So, yeah, their approval's not needed in this case, but we do welcome their input.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay. Open up this period now for any testimony for or against this annexation. I see none. We'll close this public hearing, and as Megan indicated, we'll keep the record open for 10 days for any additional written testimony or emails or phone calls. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes. Donna suggests, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on June 9th, June 16th, and June 23rd of 2020.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all of the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval ordinance under unfinished business, NP Hagerstown Industrial LLC.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to convey four undeveloped sections of property right-of-way to NP Hagerstown Industrial LLC. These rights-of-ways compromising portions of Center Street, Edgemont Avenue, and Alley 2-50 have been determined to no longer be needed for a public purpose. The total area of this conveyance is approximately 0.7 acres.
Second.
Just note that's Edgewood Avenue.
What did I say? Edgemont? Oh, sorry.
It's okay. All right. Just clarifying.
It's a lot of words. Learning the words.
I'm not trying to argue, guys. All right. Motion made by Emily, second by Shelley. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved annex resolution, annex of Valley Mall Road Properties, case number A-2020-4. Now's the time.
I'd like to make a motion to table. Second.
Second. Do you have a motion to table and a second? Any discussion? All right, so we'll have this on the agenda for next week, Scott. Okay? We're not going to dilly-dally on this, but it comes to resolution of this issue. All in favor of tabling this, this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it. Under new business, introduction of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of property located at 216 South Prospect Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a donation of the real property located at 216 South Prospect with the goal of demolishing the property as determined to be the best path forward for the surrounding community and selling it thereafter. The property had significant damage due to a fire, and rehabilitation of the property far exceeds the value of the property. The property is being donated in as-is condition.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a quick point. We had some other communication on this item, and obviously, growing up and living in the South, and I'm obviously familiar with the property being referred to, and I wanted to say two things. One is, I appreciate the, what I'll call the more detailed or broader depth of information that the adjoining property owner and neighbor would provide, sort of that firsthand perspective of living in a community where they want it to be nice and stable and productive and marketable, and having to endure watching a neighboring property such as this that could have such great promise just fall into disrepair, neglect and decay because of the apparent purposeful operation of that owner. The unfortunate thing is, as I've said before, you know, that there, there's hardly a block in this city where owners like ourselves, residents like ourselves, couldn't identify some house or property they passed by and see, and it is entirely, unacceptably unfortunate that this is the result that has to be happened with this property on a street that has the bones of very good houses that should be kept in care in a much more positive manner.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance for a deed of easement from 114 East Magnolia.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance for a local conversion district overlay, including the parking conditions endorsed by the planning commission on property located at 202 Howard Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Upstate. Upstate.
Yes, for 4 to 1. Introduction of an ordinance for a deed of easement from 114 East Magnolia.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a deed of easement for the future reconstruction of a retaining wall for Alley 5-62 adjacent to 114 East Magnolia Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of, oop. Introduction of an ordinance for a deed of easement from 118 East Magnolia.
Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a deed of easement for the future reconstruction of a retaining wall for Alley 562 adjacent to 118 East Magnolia Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved resolution extending the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to extend the term of the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council ad hoc committee. The goal of the council is to facilitate communication and participation by city youth regarding city government decision-making and planning. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved resolution to amend the financial incentive with Conagra Foods Packaging Foods LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to approve a resolution authorizing an addendum to the financial incentive agreement for the creation of jobs and investment previously with Pinnacle Foods LLC on July 8, 2016. Conagra Foods Packaging Foods LLC became the successor to Pinnacle Foods on May 27, 2019, and assumed all rights and obligations with respect to the financial incentive agreement under the amendment. All other terms and conditions of the financial incentive agreement will remain the same.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved resolution, second rental guarantee agreement for 100 North Potomac Street Housing Project, Catalyst Project Number Three.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to adopt a resolution to enter in the attached student housing, housing rental guarantee agreement with Blackwell 2 LLC for the student housing project located at 100 North Potomac Street. This is the second agreement for the first model student housing project under Catalyst Project Number Three, USMH Expansion Support.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved for an amendment to annexation plan, annexation case A-2020-03, Cole Road Properties.
Mr. Mayor, move for the mayor and city council to approve an amendment to the annexation plan for annexation case number A 2020-03, known as pre-annexation agreement case number WS 2004-03, Cole Road Properties, Kohl's, Bob's Discount Furniture, Christmas Tree Shop, Ross, DSW, and remaining vacant storefronts. The amendment corrects the addressing for a portion of the annexation.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Approval of Invest Hagerstown Grant Program funding levels and updated guidelines for the grant programs.
Mr. Mayor, move the mayor and city council to approve the Invest Hagerstown Grants Program's funding levels and updated guidelines. The program includes five categories. One, the City Center Redevelopment Grant Program. Two, the Citywide Redevelopment Grant Program. Three, the Home Ownership Grant Program. Four, the Rental Property Rehabilitation Grant Program. And five, the Fassad Grant Program. Mayor and city council approve the City Center Redevelopment Grant Applications making up $500,000 of the total $804,000 in FY 2021 funds. The Program Review Committee approves the grant applications for the remaining $304,000 in FY 2021 funds. For monitoring during the COVID-19 crisis, staff will update the mayor and council once the review committee has awarded $121,600, 40% of the $304,000 in FY 21 funds. And once, and again, once the review committee has awarded $182,400, 60% of the $304,000 in FY 21 funds. Funding of this program will come from the Economic Redevelopment Fund, Invest Hagerstown line items in the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second.
Discussion.
So, two things here. One is, we have certainly had good success, and I think as we saw at the presentation at the beginning of this meeting, I don't, I didn't recognize hardly any of those properties that weren't a product of part of this Invest Hagerstown program that we instituted, you know, over a number of years. And that little bit of seed money, you know, I think in a lot of cases made it enticing enough, not possible, but enticing enough for those private developers that were in this room this evening to take that risk of their own accord on the millions of dollars that they invested in these private ventures. It didn't require us to expend the taxpayers' money in such a large course, which we had, you know, a debate on 10 years ago now, where we used to go out and have to do all of it, meaning buy it ourselves, fix it up ourselves, and try and market it, and then sell it for a loss ourselves. It's definitely a better approach. I remain committed to the impetus for adjusting the tax rate and having all of this money applied to this economic effort. I think it speaks volumes, all of those pictures of the improvement that it brings to every block, because all of those are anchor buildings that I think we saw here this evening. The second point I wanted to make is, I have been fairly steadfast in wanting to include the landlords and frankly, a lot of these sort of half-doubles into the mix, because I don't know if anyone else has gotten comment from time to time about somebody who buys a half-double, lives in it, tries to fix it up, and then they've got a neighboring property that doesn't, or a landlord that owns one half fixes it up, rents it out, and then has an owner or, or a vacated owner in the other half. So I really want for us to try and see if we can work with landlords and see if what we're offering in this Invest Hagerstown component to those landlords is enough, because I think it's 7,500 if they put in 15,000. And if it's not, then I think we need to come back to the table next year and figure out what is, because I think it is very important for us as a body to identify ways in which we can ensure that, you know, the landlord has the opportunity to acquire those other half of the double and fix them up and rent them or sell them, and, and make those work just as successfully as the rest of this program has.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved open container exemption for Visit Hagerstown CDP.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that mayor and council approve an exemption from the City of Hagerstown Open Containers Regulation under Section 173-6 of the Code of the City of Hagerstown for Visit Hagerstown Convention and Visitors Bureau at University Plaza on September 11, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of 2020 to 2025 five-year Axon Body Camera Contract Renewal.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to renew the Axon Body Camera Contract. This is a multi-year contract that will run through FY 25, and will cover new body cameras, their maintenance, the associated video storage and management software, hardware, licensing fees, and warranties. The purchase will be made with funds from the Hagerstown Police Annual Operating Maintenance Budget 0110401-5378. The total cost of the contract is $339,237.60 and will be paid annually at $67,847.52 on the anniversary date for the duration of the contract. This is a sole source project, as the goods and services required are only manufactured and available from Axon. Furthermore, allied law enforcement agencies in the county, along with the Washington County State's Attorney's Office, utilize the same platform for joint investigations and prosecution, prosecutions.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the sale of 70 Gainwell Fire Alarm Boxes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the sale of 70 Gainwell Fire Alarm Boxes to Mr. Lloyd Thoburn of Coinop Warehouse. He has offered $14,000 for 70 Gainwell Boxes that range in condition from good slash fair to rough. Gainwell Boxes were the primary alerting system that activated bells in the fire stations to ring, sirens blow, and notch a tape with the box number where an incident was occurring. The system was removed from service in 2004, 2005. The Gainwell Boxes have been in storage since that time.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Donation to municipal airport plaque to the Hagerstown Aviation Museum.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to donate the 1934 City of Hagerstown Municipal Airport Plaque to the Hagerstown Aviation Museum. The Hagerstown Aviation Museum will include the plaque in their museum collection. This is a gratis donation from the City of Hagerstown.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. City minister, your comments?
Thank you, mayor. Just two things. I want to thank the Parks Department teaming up with DCED for a very nice Imagine Hagerstown Fourth Friday event last Friday with the Plate Scrapers and Skyler Burrell Band. About 200 people showed up, they brought in food, they social distanced, they wore masks, and several folks had said it was their first time at University Plaza. They were looking for something to do and traveling in here and were very pleased with, with the event. So our next one will be the Fourth Friday in August, and that'll be Josh Morningstar from Funkstown, National, has a hit record, can't think of who sang the song, but he wrote the, he wrote the song. Looking forward to hearing him again. He was on our virtual Imagine Hagerstown back in May, so looking forward to that. This Saturday is the last concert in the Summer Concert Series at City Park, the Rock and Roll Relics at 7:00. That has also been a very nice event and just very glad that we could continue to do that, give folks a little bit of a escape on the weekends. That's it for me, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. [inaudible].
I have no comments this evening.
Austin.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Couple want to roll.
Sorry. I got a couple things. Sorry. Not sorry. So we, I was approached recently by some interested individuals for a skateboard park. So there is a grassroots effort that is currently happening, because they are very interested in the possibility of a skateboard park in the City of Hagerstown. So we are looking for individuals that are interested in joining a steering committee to see, to test the viability of the potential skateboard park that will be brought into a work session at a later date. So that's one. Additionally, this, I guess it's next Thursday, August 5th, next Wednesday, from 9:00 to 4:00 in the University Plaza, we will be holding our third Washington County Recovers Event. This is where organizations all throughout the county who are excellent at helping with recovery and getting people what they need at a time during COVID where it's even more important, there are many, many, many of those that are suffering from addiction, even worse now, and they are all under, in one location at the University Plaza. And to date, we have helped over 20 people get on their path to recovery. So it is going to be Wednesday, August 5th, from 9:00 to 4:00, and it's a very successful event. So there is a Facebook page, there is an event page. I encourage you to share and like, and if you are, if you know someone that needs recovery or you are curious about recovery, I encourage you to be there, because there will be someone there to help you with treatment and to navigate the system, because it is difficult. And last but not least, I was in a neighboring city over the weekend, and it was over brunch, and they had shut down their street, a block of it, for probably from 11:00 to 1:00, 11:00 to 2:00. And I was wondering about the possibility of a discussion on how we could go about doing that again. I know we did it one night for, on a Saturday, that was very successful, and I think that during these COVID times where, you know, the gentleman had mentioned it being only at 50% capacity, and that is a, that's really hard for a business. It's very difficult in the restaurant industry. So I feel like if we are asking our business owners to be creative and create a thriving downtown, I think that we need to help them to be creative. So I'm looking for a possibility to be able to, even on Sunday where the traffic is slightly less, and brunch is a new hip thing, and maybe we can, you know, close the street down for a portion of time. And that's it.
Agreed.
Great. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
I just have actually two things this evening. One is, you know, in these times when the defund police and all those things are going on in this country, I want to shed a little bit of great news about our police department. On July 10th, at 8:08 PM, Officer Kylie Hill and PO Tyler Nichols performed a hymn and they were on a guy who was pounding on the door of the police station, couldn't breathe and couldn't talk, saved his life. On July 23rd, Officer Richie Dean, Officer Tyler Hellman, Officer Mitch Fiedels, and Officer Jason Patiste, and Kylie Hill again, saved the life of a female who was threatening to jump off a roof with the roof of the extension cord wrapped around her neck. Officer Dean climbed out on the window of this roof to the female and stopped her from, from throwing herself over the edge, and it was, it was dangerous, because it had just rained, and the roof was very slippery, and Officer Hellman assisted Officer Dean in that, and the others helped to calm the lady and, and wait until an ambulance arrived to take her for evaluation. And just last weekend, on Friday on July 24th, right down here below us, Officer Tyler Rep, Officer Kylie Hill again, PO Tyler Nichols, Officer Joseph Brady located a stabbing victim who had a life-threatening wound to his leg, severing the artery, and they applied a tourniquet and took additional measures to save his life. And Officer Rep applied a tourniquet, and the others helped pack the wound and try to, try to calm the man down to get him in the ambulance to get him to, to the OR. So these are three instances where, where our guys go above and beyond, and, and girls to, to save people's lives in Hagerstown, Maryland, and I appreciate that very much. They don't get enough praise, and thank you very much for that. Speaking of praise, Thursday evening from 5:30 till 6:30 on the square, there's going to be a police appreciation rally. I hope you can join it, just to show our, our appreciation for our police officers in Hagerstown, Maryland, and Washington County, and those from the state of Maryland who patrol our area. We appreciate all they do every single day, and they're under a microscope without a doubt every time, 24/7. And I can't say enough about the professionalism of our department, and I'd see y'all who want to come out and help support our police, please show up.
With David?
And with that, I'm sorry.
What day is that?
Thursday. Thursday night coming up. Yep. 5:30 to 6:30. All right. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.